Explanation is probably better.
So if we're letting go after the never swinging dead were coming, there was some stuff so they were promised this, they were promised that.
Well, the proof is in the pudding, there it is. It was brought up, it was addressed, and dropped.
There's responsibility on both sides.
Exactly, so it would boil it down to is, the way I look at it is, why would you wait twenty years?
Yeah, that doesn't make any sense.
And it's not existing boards.
So then, if you would, you need a motion then to advise the resident that the board rejects his claim or offer, is that?
Often, I could just wait another twenty years.
Request? Request, yes. You don't need a motion, do you?
I.
I'd need privacy phone calls, like, you know, to call over shop line.
If it was a big deal, like you said, he would have not paid it for twenty years. All of a sudden, last few months, he says he's not gonna pay.
So you want me to communicate, I can send him a letter.
Just advise when the board rejected his, yeah. Alright, anything else from ya?
No, that was it.
That's everything?
Rose, I just had a quick question, I don't, it's in my pile here somewhere, your, your, um, uh, list of deposits in there?
My register report?
Yes, that.
Yeah.
The description, could you, could you make that feel wider, so?
Yeah, I can adjust that.
Cause there's.
I try to remember to do that, cause Gene has asked me the same thing, so I try to remember.
I mean, that's, that's one of them.
Okay.
To see what some of those are, the full detail of those.
Sure.
Does anybody else have anything for Rose?
Cookies. We need cookies.
Okay, so.
I'll get, I'll work on that.
Alright, so that concludes the reports.
This is only a work session, work session.
Do we wanna, should we go into executive now, or should we get through correspondence quickly?
Yeah, sorry.
Correspondence is awesome.
Shouldn't take long, I heard a couple questions.
Okay, alright, so let's hammer through correspondence, first one is from New York, uh, from New York State, Department of State, municipal restructuring fund. Does anybody have anything to add for that? Uh, B, Cat County Health Department notice, that was for, what was the date on that, Rose, for?
February second, two thousand sixteen.
No, the date that the, we had the incident from?
Uh, compliance period beginning seven one, two thousand fifteen, ending nine thirty, two thousand fifteen.
And do we have to, does that get remitted, or does that get submitted to the residents in our?
In the annual water quality report.
Annual quality. Okay, does anybody have questions regarding that?
Why didn't we perform the test?
Yeah.
From the best of what I can figure out, um, that was just before or during time I came on board. Code says he sampled that, um, day or a week or whatever, had a schedule, and then simply did not reschedule, re- resample when the actual sample day was supposed to be. Um, as far as anything past that, I had no reason to be aware or believe it hadn't been done. So if you wanna call that negligence, call it negligence, but the first I've been notified of it was, I don't know about, I had a quite significant idea when Chris told her from the health department said, hey, can I get this sample as well from you, and I said, sure, no problem, and I looked for it, I can't find it, when I asked to let it forth, they said, we don't have one. So that's why I'm being a publicist, that's, if you remember, that's what happened. We haven't missed any samples of any kind since then.
Alright, uh, ten more cable agreement, or expiry agreement, that's their same email they sent him in one. The EFC, which is the, for the grants, which is what we're receiving from them, I don't think there's anything to really add regarding that.
It's a webinar from February.
Right, but for those who apply for them, which we, um, E, New York State DBC, permit renewal. Does anybody have to add anything onto that? Alright, uh, F, email from Mr. Freeman, uh, regard, from the Department of State, uh, regarding the agenda, does anybody have anything to comment on that? Uh, G, email from Eric before he was on the board regarding the stock repayment, do you have anything to comment on that? Okay.
You first.
Uh, email from Mary Chapel, uh, CBBG, section three reporting, that's been taken care of, that's definitely been taken care of, correct, Rose?
We've done the reporting to date, it sounds like they're looking for someone in the, someone from the village to be. We didn't have to report for two thousand fifteen because we hadn't bid the project yet, we'll need to report quarterly from now on, we need to determine who the section three compliance officer will be. And I asked if it needed to be someone who worked for the village, or one of our advisors, and she said someone from the village.
Alright, so.
We have not appointed anyone to do that.
Shouldn't it just be John then, would anybody disagree with that?
I, I don't remember what section three is, I'll, I'll pitch all these different compliance.
I mean, John, since you're gonna be, you're gonna be in there, and working along regarding, you know, with the project, you have an issue with receiving that designation for section three reporting?
Each contractor with a contract over two hundred thousand will have to complete a section three qualification plan, and provide good faith effort to hire low income disadvantaged workers.
For the contractors.
Okay, yes.
Oh, that's what that, excuse me, that's what that was regards to, was low income minorities, okay. Um, does anybody need a motion for that, Rose? Alright, I make the, uh, do I have a motion then for John Wolf to be the?
Oh, section three compliance officer.
Yes, second?
Second.
So you got Eric made a motion about second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, carried and approved. Alright, uh, email from Melissa Becker, uh, regarding proposal for auditing services.
He just.
Yeah.
He contracted with Mercer.
Correct. Uh, email from Cat County, uh, regarding the invite hazard mitigation assistance program, does anybody have anything to add regarding that? I don't, okay, uh, Kenny HomeServe, resident mailing regarding water sewer line repair. Does anybody have anything to add regarding home serve?
It's a common one, every once in a while, from what I've seen, it's expensive.
Yeah. Uh, L, email from Cat County Department of Aging, uh, for loans and grants availability primarily such as our senior building. Rose, do you still have a copy of that by chance?
I do.
You do, um, when and how long are they accepting applications?
Uh, it's information about USDA loans and grants. Um, yeah, I don't see any dates.
Is there, uh, I just think if, um, Kathy Mackey or anybody was gonna be helping, like, where, applying for such grants?
Hmm, I didn't see anywhere where it said that. I hate this, it's just notifications from USDA.
Right. So, uh, can you, Rose, by chance, see, um, I know you're extremely, extremely busy, maybe have Joy do such? See about finding out regarding the, um, grant availability, and potentially how much it would entail for us to go through and to see what we can do? Maybe Joy could reach out to Kathy Mackey or somebody at, um, the Department of Aging with the county.
Well, that's who sent it to us.
Right, and see maybe if they would be able to give some guidance or assistance, just asking.
I mean, it's the same, it's the same type of thing, there's direct loans, there's grants, there's a mixture, there, you know, combination, there are, so.
Yeah, regarding it. Strictly the grants.
We obviously don't want to kick in anymore.
No, no, so just the grant portion.
Okay.
Okay. Alright, uh, Adam, Cat County, Office of County Attorney, transfer of property at fifty one Washington Street, okay, um, do we need a motion on this one?
Yes, if, if you're going to go ahead and do it, um, I think I sent out with the, um, email with the, with the attachments.
I'm remembering some.
That the town approved it and said the village could sign paperwork, um, so I have the, um.
The town agreeing to it as well, so they're gonna get half, we get half, the county no longer has any interest or ownership in their property. Alright, so do I have a motion then to accept the, um, what do you call it?
Accept the transfer of property?
Bob and Eric and over, this, this started the, over here, going Mark, Mark Burris, the one that first brought it to my attention.
So this is in regards to the part of the property next to Washington, or next to this old school?
Right.
Okay, that the county is giving up its ownership, and that both the town and the village are gonna have fifty fifty ownership on the property?
Well, we're gonna get one half, they're gonna get another half.
There was, there was, for, for how, whatever reason, there was a three fifth county, one fifth town, one fifth village ownership of that piece of property. How it ended up that way, I don't know, I had something to do with it. County wants to get out of it completely, it's basically from Jefferson Street Bridge to Washington Street Calder.
Yep.
That piece of property, so we want to maintain that for, we need to maintain control of that area, so. It's basically, they're giving up their three fifths, which turns into a fifty fifty split.
Does that, does this have anything to do with the bridge?
Not, not necessarily, but it makes it easier for the, for the process, because we all own the property, us and the town own that property. So you know, these little neighbors and all that kind of crap, so it makes it easier.
Alright, so you need a motion for me to go ahead?
To accept the transfer of fifty one Washington Street and authorize the mayor to sign the quitclaim deed, the combined real estate transfer tax return, and the real property transfer report.
Do I have a motion?
Okay.
Okay, or made the motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Bob, second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, carried and approved.
And I will have those, I'll put them out for you, same.
Okay, uh, and email from American Water Resources, resident mailing regarding water sewer line repair. I don't have anything to add regarding that, does anybody? Okay, uh, joint planning board, March ninth, uh, two thousand sixteen minutes, we don't need to approve those, right? Those are amendments, um, does anybody have any questions regarding that?
Well, they want us to approve those.
Eventually, yeah, but I, I asked it, I asked, yeah, right now it's informational, um, I asked if they wanted the, if they were ready for you guys to, to like have a public hearing, and they said no.
Are, are they gonna be coming back to?
Yes, when they're ready for you to look at it and say, yes, we wanna pursue this, then they're gonna come to the meeting.
Okay. Uh, email from Jake Yonello regarding the permission to Cat County Department of Health for meter replacements, and email from Ben Slotman regarding the website meter information, which Jake is going to be updating with what we discussed today. Um, municipal solution, solutions, you gotta go again? Want me to go away for you?
No, go ahead.
Oh, no, we gotta wait for the mess.
Well, the next thing you're gonna wanna, I think, vote on, or decline, or?
Well, I think we need to have that conversation prepared.
This proposal?
This along, this kind of fits into the short term financing, fine anticipation, and all that, so. My opinion is we should table it until we have that conversation, or if you'd like, or to the May meeting.
I agree. Can you do that, Rose?
I can.
So for R is gonna be, um, we're just gonna request that, Mary?
Table to the May meeting and ask Mary to attend.
Yep. It's okay, buddy. We still got more to go. Alright, uh, New York State Department of Public Service, uh, public state hearings on delivery rates, uh, does anybody have anything to add on that? And that's their two. Uh, we're on T, uh, email from NICOM, regarding the update on the twenty sixteen seventeen state budget. Um, did everybody get a chance to read that, that they're adding, I don't know if you're happy about that, but that they're adding more to state, or to education? And also that Senator Young's district is getting a substantial increase, how does that affect Cat Little, that they're leaving a lot regarding that, that will help?
At, at the very most, it would be a flat tax increase, or no, no increase. There's a slight possibility that there actually be a, a decrease.
Really?
So, our, our, uh, our, uh, tax levy limit is actually negative. So, we actually have to cut spending, even though, even though A is going up, we have to cut spending, because it's tied to the C, uh, consumer price index, so it's actually negative. It's not to two percent that they all want it to be, so.
Uh, does anybody have anything to add in regards to the state budget? John, you know yet what, uh, you're we getting, or what's coming for chips?
The money's already been refunded for the year, so it would be next year's, this following year.
Right.
And I, I heard, I heard it supposedly going up, but I haven't heard how much or seen how much, so.
Never heard it's supposed to be significant in the north.
Well, I'm guessing probably for us, it probably like three hundred dollars would probably be. You know, I don't know how much it went across the board, I don't think it did.
This was prior to the budget being asked adopted, and I don't think it was, I might be wrong, but I don't think it did. I think they froze.
Chips?
Chips and A I M.
Oh, they have increased A I M and?
Right, I think they, I think they froze it both, but remember last year they added some, or maybe it was two.
Would have recovered.
Something to chips.
They had, they had it last year.
That's, that's still gonna be there, my understanding is that's still there, but.
They're gonna let that go, and that's gonna be your actual department, it's like, you know, two hundred bucks.
No, it was actually significant for us last year. Yeah, it was, it was like twenty five hundred or something, because we were at like twenty nine thousand or something in the chips, and it put us over thirty one.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that was a good amount, so that, that little extra kicker actually helps for us, okay. Uh, moving on, uh, you, Cat County Department Health Department approval of plans and specifications, uh, Rose? Okay, so.
That basically everything that Jake sent in that big thick email was approving that.
Okay.
I don't think it was, it's just notification.
Right, uh, New York State DBC, comprehensive inspection, that's on the sewer department, right? Yeah, okay.
How'd we do?
Satisfied.
Not, no issues? Did they say of anything like that you need to, of any concern?
No major deficiencies or violations were identified, they're in full inspection.
Yeah.
The village is consistent on compliance with its speediest permit, and Mr. Wolf, we gotta get that changed.
What?
Mr. Wolf is to be commended on his skillful operation of the plant, and then it was a pure.
I thought I gave you a copy, John, but I'll make another copy for you.
I just wanted to see if anybody wrote it.
He just wanted to tell his own war.
I don't, I don't, no.
You want to substitute it for you.
No, I don't, all I was concerned about is that they seem, you know, we still have a problem with infiltration, the rest of it.
Pump stations.
Pump stations, basically spend money.
Well, that, since we're talking about it real quick, that is definitely an area we should look at with the, um, assessment, the, the sixty dollar here. Because this, this is, it's gonna come up and bite us in the butt one day, and it's gonna cost us several thousand dollars, unless we plan for it, and kind of do it along the way, so.
Most definitely, most definitely, I mean, it's. Alright, so you take this, a new girl, Melanie Stein, and her department from down, I give them the full, um, replacement, sold everything, and she, when the sewer plant, everything, walked down the outlet, she's, you know.
Yeah, that's who wrote the letter.
And I, uh, did express my concerns, involved with them taking that bridge.
When are we gonna be, how much do the pumps cost?
Which ones, ones like the pump station, or any less ones reading on the pros and peels?
Well, with the capital improvement that we're putting towards it, we should be?
Well, it's not so much the pumps, we got money for pumps, it's just that the, the, the electric, the electrical part of the, the boxes are controlled. Sad part of this one, they, you, you might very dumb to when they put the sewer system in, they pretty much crashed any antique thing they could find to put in, so everything was put in at the time as an antique. So to come with the times, I mean, you know, there's a lot of other things, I mean, ours is run at all floats, which works for me, but there's these little things you put in there, it makes this pump run, and then this pump runs, and alternative things, and it's getting old, and there's better, more ways. If we have, we do have a slight leak in the bottom of one, when the pump runs and does, you know, leak, but it's not worth paying somebody lots of money to put on there and suit up to try to fix such thing when the whole thing needs to be overhauled. This is where we're at with that, yes, and we still have some problem with infiltration, we have Cameron's pump test, have got two or three roughs off in it. That's helped, we still, it's, as in like anything else, a lot of sewer systems, a lot of it's, I mean, you've got pipes or pipes, and there's some deepens up spots, and you just don't know you're ever going to fix it all.
Right.
Real quick, you, you, you did mention a bridge, so, and, I don't know, I, I, does anyone else have an opinion on the bridge? I, I just, I think it's too important, I think it's too important to just take for granted that the price doubled, it, from, from twenty sixteen dollars to whatever dollars they're using now, is more than double. Both projects, either putting in a bridge, replacing a bridge, or not doing a bridge, both have more than doubled, I don't buy it, I really don't, I, I mean. This has been one for eight years, so I, I, I think we need to, I think we need to compose a letter between ourselves and the village, the fire department, the, the, our concerns from the sewer department, the ambulance service, Mud Creek Hill is sliding. You know, I, I, I think it's a bad decision to not replace it, and spend two point some million dollars to not replace it, that's just crazy.
Right.
It's just insane, I, I don't buy the person, they didn't do the testing they said they were gonna do, you know, and I think it's.
Will those have a hearing regarding it?
Um.
I mean, that's the time when we would, if anybody wants to voice a concern regards to it, I mean.
I don't believe so, I don't believe so, but.
I thought you said they're having.
They're gonna have a hearing if they proceed with the project, but proceeding with the project, the hearing is gonna be about, we're gonna purchase this land, and this land, and this is what we're gonna do. You know, I, I think we should get involved before then to, um, I mean, Pat Murphy has a lot of history with that project, he's pushed that project for years. And he's out of the door, he's out the door one month, and all of a sudden the project doubles, that's crazy, it's just crazy, you know? It questions, it questions our representation from our current legislators, in my mind.
I wouldn't say that, I mean, Mark Burris.
They're not here, they're always here, they're not here, and like, they don't want to be questioned on it.
That, that's not the point, it's about what, the feasibility study that Mr. Burris had regarding it, and he's an intellectual individual, I would take into consideration what that man has to say over what any legislator, anybody does, I mean, they have to conduct all the, the studies in regards to it, just as, if it says it's gonna cost that much money, and there's a better use to spend that money on, I mean, we're able to go down Mud Creek, if they're able to put money towards Mud Creek. To me, I, I trust what an engineer's gonna say over politician, I guess, essentially, I can take what their research and all that, they're saying it's gonna cost that.
I said through both Mr. Burris' presentations at this table, and, as I said, they didn't do what they said they were gonna do the first time. Uh, they didn't do the actual test to, to, to monitor whether those heli, helicore, helical pilings would be effective, and they're basing it on some, something they pushed down in the, it's clay. You can build on manure, for that matter, but you have to, your design has to accommodate it, you know, it, it, it's, I don't know, if I'm, if I'm a manure, y'all shut up, but I just.
I'm not saying it's not an important decision, but I mean, if it's an engineering study's been done and conducted, and they're saying this is what it's gonna cost, and the county doesn't have it to do, put in the budget, and that they're gonna put it towards county row twelve, I understand that logic.
No, 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 they're not gonna put it towards.
They can't, they can't.
No, the money that they would put into the row, not this, the grant money that they would get from the state, the money they would put that would come out of the county's pocket, is what they're putting towards county row twelve.
Well, let's see, we get the, like, like you said, you know, the fire department, the ambulance, get everybody together, go over the copy, say, go straight to. You said the letter opening. How do you tell George, that lives right there, that can walk to his shop, to get in his semi, that now he's gotta go all the way around? What I'm afraid of is this gonna turn, just, just like, what is it, Tug Hill, out there in Long Island? They close that bridge down, what to do with it?
Well, the point is, though, is, I mean, it's just so, it's so incredibly costly, and we're in a terrible area as far as land, I mean, it's constantly shifting. I mean, west hill shifting, the whole darn village shifting, I mean, who knows, maybe someday a motorcycle come through, and we won't have to worry about any of this anymore, but, I mean.
Yes, it's holistic.
It might, it's not, but, I mean, it's constantly shifting, I mean, it doesn't make sense that, I understand where, and that the thing that they're gonna put money in, I mean, I travel county row twelve every day, is that really ever gonna fix it? Yeah, they can do whatever, but it's gonna cost millions of, hundreds of dollars to fix each little section.
A concrete slab sitting on clay sat there for seventy nine years.
They're not contaminated, though, so it's still open.
But my point is, a concrete slab sitting on clay has been sufficient for seventy nine years, and we got all these helicore up there, I'm guessing there's fifty of them in this ground, and we're trying to say that that's not gonna end.
Is that, is that ground down there going down?
I know the town board has gone, and some of the members have gone to investigate the site, and they've taken some pictures, um, they did talk about possibly being interested in maybe a joint meeting with the village board.
Perfect, beautiful, perfect.
It's kind of a special meeting, or, or, you know, it's kind of a special meeting to discuss it, where both boards can get together and voice their opinions.
My, my biggest opinion is, and I, I may mention to you, Eric, you, because we talked about the other, whenever, when the first time they brought the presentation, Jason brought the plans back, here's the three plans, there was a double lane, single lane, and tear it up, wasn't it what it was about down to, if I remember correctly? And I went through it, and I, and I says, this is what they're gonna do, they're not gonna replace that bridge, they're gonna let it go.
The town is a spanderly, right?
Yeah, the, the, my concern is not downstream, my concern is when you take that bridge off, what's gonna happen to it, and I may mention to them, well, you know, that's gonna, if, nobody knows. It may stay fine, and it may just start pushing, and where are we at? Why don't they take the two point two million dollars in guarantee from the federal government, and throw it into that bridge, and try to make the best they can out of it? They might get thirty years out of it, and in the next thirty years, put some money away for it.
Do you understand that logic fell behind two point, however many million dollars over the course of thirty years for a very low used bridge, or a very low traveled bridge, when the county has issues all throughout?
Well.
I mean, and goodness gracious, they bring in.
Sometimes, sometimes, oh, and I don't mean to interrupt you, and I don't mean to sound mean, but, you know, sometimes you just like to state the facts to some people. And you kinda gotta wonder, ten years ago, if not longer, when they set that K bar on there, they knew we're having problems, why did we wait so long to do something? We spent that money to make a, a single lane bridge that's gonna home, got it.
So then, Rose, can, I mean, essentially what we need to do then is.
Of course. That's right. For one residence, two residences.
They wanna put in a, they wanna have a special meeting, um, I guess, what, we just communicate with Lloyd and them, and see when it would work for them?
Town board's Monday, right?
Yeah, next Monday is town board, um, at seven.
I mean, do we wanna go and talk to them next Monday? Do we wanna have a special meeting between the boards? What? Listen.
I intend, I'm, I plan on attending the town meeting next week.
I'm just saying, 'cause if we have a special meeting between both boards, then it's just both boards communicating and discussing the topic and.
I know if they're going to badly, they might better take twenty troops as you take ten.
All right, so then does everybody want a special meeting or just go to, uh, go to the meeting on Monday with the town? What works for everybody's schedule?
I don't like that.
Okay.
Huh?
I don't care if it's a special meeting.
Want a special meeting?
I'll be talking, solely talking.
Yeah, just between both boards discussing.
Do we have to advertise it or just post it?
Maybe it's only against one fifteen minutes, right? The last half hour, I don't know, because we're, we're, yeah.
So just post it.
But you're still.
What do you do usually when they call a special meeting?
Are you okay with having a special meeting when, um, it's a special?
I try to make them do it with enough time so they can have it.
Then we tend to plan on Friday night with twenty-two, twenty.
It's seventeen hours, that's the open meeting. You just have to post it, so you just.
Okay.
No, we'll make, we'll make a work session meeting here for minutes, not here, for the, for the budget.
Budget hearing is the thirteenth.
The thirteenth.
What's one on twenty-fifth?
Nothing anymore, 'cause they took out the work sessions. They're on an ass meeting.
So.
I know there's something going on twenty-fifth.
No, there isn't. That's what would have been for you.
It would have been the work session.
It would have been the work session, but it's not. So then, Kim.
The town, yeah.
Rose, can you correlate between, um, council members and Lloyd and us in regards if the twenty-fifth will work for us to have a special meeting at seven? At seven to discuss just solely the, um.
Okay.
Do you hear it?
Yeah, I can find out from them if that works and then if I've got enough for, 'cause there's enough of you guys that can attend. So then I'll make sure that there's enough of them. I'll post it and advertise it for both meetings.
Contact.
Post it in website.
Fire department and the ambulance service.
George? He's a business owner, George.
Jimmy Perkins, Jimmy Perkins.
Good Joe.
Who's George?
He's here with fire.
George Burt.
George Burt.
Charles.
Yep.
Only good at the end, Mr. Wayne, I mean.
Um. School stuff along with that?
That's right.
Okay. Uh, and would it be, it'll be the town that preside?
I beg your pardon?
It would be the town that, uh, that would preside.
Town would preside?
We can sell it there.
Well, it could be a joint. I mean, it would, you'd have.
It would be a joint. I don't know, I, there has to be.
I don't like what it said.
Someone to officiate essentially.
Short straw, but.
Short straw. Okay, so that's that. And then as well, the town has their meeting next, uh, Monday, so if anybody wants to go there and discuss it with them beforehand, of course you're entitled to do so. Uh, next up is the e, uh, letter from Ms. Earhart regarding the liability at the economy, uh, people, places and prosperity. Um, when is that meeting that they're holding?
Thursday at six-thirty at the county center.
Okay, I will not be able to attend, 'cause that is CCMO, right? Yeah. Is anybody planning on attending that, uh?
That the legislative meeting?
You got the, Jason?
I will school here.
Bob?
Contract.
Are you busy Thursday next, sir?
Uh, can't think of anything right now.
Are you saying if you wanted to go to that just to hear what they had to, you don't need to.
It's up to you.
Okay.
Where would that be?
Uh, that's at the.
Court house, eh?
Court, legislators' office, right?
Some legislative chamber, we have a third floor.
Yeah.
Well, I'm not your mom, my girl.
That would be the slide on it.
Thank you, Bob. All right, um, Ax was trying to change to auto physical coverage. Is there anybody who can add it onto that? Uh, Wyatt's email from NICOM, webinars for new municipal officials. Make sure somebody will wanna sign up for that.
We're not down for that.
Uh, all right. Let's go through and then this quickly and then we'll go through, um.
We'll go through.
I was gonna ask this, 'cause it's eleven, four o'clock comes early. Is there anything that we need to talk about tonight? Old business, new business?
Uh, old business, just a couple of numbers where we stand, um.
See.
We do need to discuss, well, we'll discuss the union, uh, the union contract. Well, that'll be in executive. Um. What was it about FEMA funds? Was that? FEMA funds?
I don't know. You asked me to put that on the, I don't know if it was you or.
That was to track John to make sure, yeah, so to make sure that John had everything submitted and that we're all secure and safe with that.
Done, so.
We're still waiting, we're just waiting for a lot more to get done, and then when that's done, we'll.
We got until July to get things done and, like, you know. I was hoping for a more severe weather to see how much things were gonna change, but they didn't, so we'll proceed and get things done.
Yes, so just to make sure that we get.
Do you want that to stay on the agenda?
Yes, that's to ensure that we don't forget, because we received a significant amount, uh, from FEMA, I wanna make sure that we don't have to pay those funds back.
Okay.
Um.
Everything else can be tabled, right?
What about the handling law? Are we able to set that where we could go ahead and have a hearing set for the May meeting?
True, I think it rock.
Yeah?
Uh, I.
Have you been over it?
I skimmed through it, but.
If you, if any of the board members want changes, you should probably look over it first, then set the hearing, because when you do the hearing, if you make any changes after it.
We have to do it all over again?
Yeah, so.
All right, so can we reconvene then on, what is it, for May's meeting that everybody will have that reviewed? Any, uh, changes? If we can submit it beforehand, so then we can go ahead and set forth the local, or submit the hearing then to be for June, uh, prospectively? Okay. Um, okay, so at this point in time, uh, do I have a motion to go into executive session at eleven o'clock on the dot? With John, Rose and Jay all present, and discuss, oh, what should we?
The union contract?
Union contract and also employee.
Employee health matter?
Yes. Do I have an, uh, motion for that?
I'll make a more.
And do I have a second?
I'll second.
Jason made a motion, Eric second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous, carried and approved. Thank you, town.